All right, go.
All right, apologize for the delay, we've got a little bit of a different setup tonight. But wanted to start off by just giving an overview of the key findings from the housing study, just as a refresher for all of you guys on what urban partners found. So demographic trends, we're just gonna jump right into it. Population has grown rapidly from two thousand and ten to two thousand and nineteen, so that's no surprise. That's something that Hamilton County and Fishers is known for, is our rapidly growing population. However, forecasts do indicate that we are gonna see a slowing population growth in the coming decade. So we'll still see growth, but it's not gonna be as rapidly as what we've seen in the past. The fastest growing age population segment is senior sixty-five plus. So those are our aging population, so those that are currently in our community. And then new residents moving to Fishers are three times more likely to be young adults aged twenty-five to thirty-four. And so that's really exciting that we are attracting that young professional age segment into our community. And then consistent with in the past, nearly half of employed Fishers residents do commute to Indianapolis. That's no surprise as the capital of our city. So going over some for sale market trends, so home prices have steadily increased in the last five years. So we've seen a twenty-six percent increase since two thousand and sixteen. Single-family home sizes have also increased, probably contributes to that price increase. So we've seen an increase in the home size by forty-two percent since the nineteen nineties. And then the supply of homes for sale in Fishers is extremely limited. So when the study was done, we had point-five months of inventory, which is extremely tight in the home buyer market. And then we are starting to see redevelopment occur in Fishers. So we're largely seeing this currently in our downtown area. And South Village is a good example of that residential redevelopment. So for the rental market trends, our multifamily rental market is also extremely tight. So when the study was conducted, we had point-nine vacancy rate. In a quote-unquote "healthy" market, you typically see about six percent to nine percent vacancy rate. So you can see it's really, really tight for our current multifamily. Three-bedroom units are commanding very high rents per square footage, which is not what you traditionally see. So as you increase bedrooms and square footage, usually you get a lower price per square foot. But that is not the case in our community, you actually see a higher price per square foot the higher you go up. And that largely can be attributed to the demand for family rentals in our community. We're also seeing that in the single-family rental market. So we're thirty percent of all rental units in Fishers are single-family homes. And national single-family rental companies are competing with home buyers. And we have heard a lot about that in the past. And as Mayor Fadness mentioned, we're not gonna touch on that really tonight, but that's a conversation for a later council meeting. So looking at our population projections, so this is the forecasted population growth from now until the year twenty forty. So this at Build Out, it is anticipated that our population would be about one hundred and thirty-six thousand, which is an increase by about thirty-two thousand, three hundred residents. So to meet that population demand, Urban Partners did analysis, and they estimated that we would need about thirteen thousand additional housing units to meet that housing demand. So that's quite a bit of growth. And then they broke that down in here, in this table, into different age segments, and then also owner-occupied versus renter-occupied housing. But really, that thirteen thousand is just that number that we could expect to target. So then the overall goal for housing strategies that we came up with, with Urban Partners' help in the facilitation, but then also as a committee, was really to ensure that there's high-quality housing options for Fishers residents in all life stages. And there were four main points to this. The first being senior housing for the aging population. Second is attracting and retaining that young adult and professional age segment. Three is maintaining a high-quality rental stock. And four was how we can support our social service providers and affordable housing. So I'm gonna go over each one of these briefly. So strategy one was that encourage development of a variety of senior housing units. So some of the key findings, again, consistent with national demographic trends, Fishers population is aging. And it's expected that forty-two point-five percent of all net household growth in the next twenty years will be headed by households sixty-five years or older. So Urban Partners broke that down, and they anticipated that about seven thousand owner-occupied units would be needed, and about just under a thousand rental units would be needed for this age segment. And according to a two thousand and nineteen study by AARP and the University of Michigan, eighty-eight percent of older adults would like to remain in their homes as they age. So I just point that out because that seven thousand isn't necessarily new housing. It could be existing housing that someone chooses to age in place. And then just some key findings for our existing housing stock. So fifteen percent of Fishers owner-occupied housing today is targeted for sixty-five plus. And then eighteen percent of all of our multifamily housing is assisted living. Twenty percent of all single-family homes that have been approved in the past three years have been age-targeted. And then I've just got here the anticipated population percentage for those aged sixty-five or older. You can see that twenty forty, it's just under twenty percent of our population will be over the age of sixty-five. And so all of these numbers, the fifteen percent, eighteen percent, and twenty percent, really is in line with what that population growth is anticipated to be. And arguably, it's somewhat higher than what that age population segment is today. So some recommendations from the housing study was to increase the supply of new, lower-maintenance housing in walkable amenity-rich neighborhoods. So really making sure that these new developments are surrounded by neighborhoods that are rich with amenities that they can easily access. And then also to offer technical and financial assistance for senior home modifications for those interested in aging in place. So although you might wanna age in place, your home might need to have a ramp installed or wider doorways put in, and so making sure that people have those resources to be able to age in place. So strategy two is to encourage development of housing types to attract and retain the young adult population. So new residents moving to Fishers from outside of Hamilton County, as I mentioned, are three times as likely to be between the ages of twenty-five to thirty-four. Nationally, sixty-one percent of that age segment is renters. And home prices have increased by twenty-six percent from two thousand and sixteen to twenty-one as the median size of the new homes have increased. So really what this is telling you is that the price of houses is increasing. And so this age, this segment of population doesn't necessarily have the choice to buy a home, and so we're seeing them rent, and that is nationally. Great, thank you. So of the just under six thousand units that are rental units today in Fishers, there's nineteen multifamily complexes. Only fifty units were available to rent at the time the study was done. So again, that's where that vacancy rate of less than one percent came from. And then the incremental demand for housing, just as it was for the senior housing, they projected about two hundred and seventy-one owner-occupied units and seven hundred and seventy-eight rental units. And so the recommendations that came from that strategy is to work with developers and home builders to construct right-sized homes at attainable prices. And so an example of what a right-sized home would be is three-bedroom, two-and-a-half baths with eighteen hundred square feet of living space. So really, this is a home that would have a really good resale value on the market, someone looking for a three-bed, two-bath. Second recommendation is to examine and modify current zoning in areas deemed necessary to ensure developers can build denser residential structures such as apartments, condos, and townhomes. So that's really that missing middle housing segment. And then ensuring that homes located in mixed-use environments properly integrate design features that promote walkability. So similar to what we saw with the senior housing, really making sure that these different residential developments are in amenity-rich areas. Strategy three, I'm just gonna go over this briefly because it does have to do with the high-quality rental housing stock. So key findings, thirty percent of all of our rental units in Fishers are single-family homes. We're seeing national single-family rental companies and out-of-town investors managing rental operations here in Fishers. And from twenty twenty to twenty forty, if nothing's done, no policies implemented, a considerable percentage of our older single-family homes that are currently owner-occupied will filter to that renter status because we are seeing an increase in the demand from those out-of-state investors. And so some recommendations was to initiate a rental registry program, maintain a real-time inventory of rental homes along with key property information such as the owner and if they have a history of violations, and then evaluate the feasibility of instituting an incentive to de-convert those single-family renters into homeownership. And the fourth strategy was consideration of affordable housing. So key findings here are that as of twenty twenty-one, there are two income-restricted affordable housing communities located in Fishers for a total of two hundred and ninety-two units. This would be Cumberland Crossing and then the recently constructed South Point Village. And so some recommendations from the housing study were to collaborate with the IHCDAs and other county agencies, local, private, and nonprofit housing development organizations to build new income-restricted rental units in amenity-rich areas, and then work with social service providers and housing development organizations to maintain and provide homes for senior and low-to-moderate income individuals with disabilities and special needs. And so I did wanna highlight here something that our staff is currently working on in partnership with the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability. So we are in the process of creating an accessible housing guide, and we hope to have this ready for March Disability Awareness Month. But this is really getting at what that fourth recommendation hit on, which was making sure that those in our community are aware of the resources that exist today to either make home modifications or to provide financial assistance if they're struggling to find housing in our neighborhood. And so we're really hoping that this is a good resource for those looking to identify some financial assistance that exists today. And then getting into our housing strategy, so taking all this information, you know, what staff's, what's staff gonna do with this information? So we went ahead and we looked at our existing land use today. So when Fishers twenty forty was first adopted in two thousand and sixteen, we had this existing land use map, and we've gone ahead and we've updated this. And so this is showing the current breakdown of land use citywide. So sixty-three percent of our residential, or of our land is currently designated as residential. Eleven percent of it is commercial, two percent is industrial, ten percent is institutional. So that would be any of the municipal facilities, places of worship, or the school buildings. Eight percent is parks, and then six percent is what we would consider undeveloped residential and agriculture land. So that's about thirteen hundred acres that is left of the city of Fishers that has the potential to redevelop. And so what our strategy is, is really to increase the supply of what we'd call a family home to attract that young adult population and professionals. And so you can see here an example of a similar recently-approved development is the Cove at Thorpe Creek. So this provided really a diversity of different types of single-family homes, but they were all geared towards that family market. So we wanna make sure that we're increasing that supply of the family home in Fishers. And then that also sets us up for a good resale market in the long run. And then in walkable neighborhoods, focusing on the senior and young adult living. And so some examples of that are just the Market Fishers District, that's in the amenity-rich area, Fishers District, and then Independence Village, which is in the Saxony area. So developments, really making sure that they have the services around them to support their long-term viability. So with that, I know I threw a lot of information at you, but really just wanted to make sure that, you know, where staff is going is in line with what you guys think we should be doing with new developments that we bring forward, and happy to answer any questions you have or hear any feedback.
Thank you very much. Just kind of a reminder for council and also for public that this is a work session, so we'll be discussing these items here amongst the council members. There's no votes or action taken today on any item. If anybody in the public wants to speak on any of these, you can wait till the end of this council meeting during the community comment section. You'll be, I got three minutes there to speak, so I'm gonna open it up for questions, comments. Go ahead.
Me?
Yeah, you go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. I have two. One is I wanna be sure that we include in our summary the under-strategy for consideration of affordable housing. It did note, and I think this is important, census data showed at the time of the study, which was about a year ago, that a significant number of Fishers households are cost-burdened. That means they pay more than thirty percent of their income toward housing costs. And it notes, the study notes here, more than thirty-two hundred homeowner households and twenty-five hundred renter households are cost-burdened. So I highlight that because that wasn't included in the key findings there, but I think that's an important note because that's also part of the consideration of affordable housing in addition to persons with disabilities, so I wanna highlight that. Secondly, I would like to make a recommendation when, to codify these recommendations within the twenty forty plan. So we had four bullet points that were part of the twenty forty plan. Plan Commission, I think smartly, said pull those out until we get this study back. It is clear to me that that, those four bullet points, and we can go over those later, but definitely correspond to what this study is communicating to us. So I just would like to make the recommendation to reinstate those four bullet points to codify them in the twenty forty plan.
Thank you.
So I don't know the process, what happens next, but I just wanna make that recommendation.
Thank you. And I would like to also, after this meeting, send you some of the housing strategies that are existing in the Fishers twenty forty plan today.
I got them.
Perfect, because some of them really do align with what came out of this housing study. So some of those are already in there today, but just wanna make, but I'm happy to take your recommendations as well.
Thank you for saying that, I'm familiar with that. I'm really focused on those four bullet points that were kind of paused until the study came back. So I think we're ready to introduce those back into the document.
You know, I just wanna make a point about my district. You know, I hear, I hear a lot of density word, you know, density, density, density. And I'm just gonna tell you, I don't think the people in my district want more density. And so, you know, I see these are all recommendations, but so if we, if we take this forward into the twenty forty plan, I mean, is this gonna be spelled out a little bit more clearly, or? I mean, how does this work?
Well, I think if we're gonna add anything back into the Fishers twenty forty plan, it would be nice to have a consensus from council moving that forward and adding those strategies into Fishers twenty forty.
Just because we did a study, that's what these people think, right? But we decide what we want, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, the appropriate framework here is we brought in subject matter experts to provide insight and advice to all of you, but ultimately, you represent your constituents, you have your own perspective on things, and so you guys need to deliberate on those recommendations and then ultimately vote on what you think the appropriate framework. And that really is what we're talking about here is a framework. So we think about the comp plan, comp plan as a lens to view agenda items that come forward. So if a development comes forward and says, "We wanna build X," then we will have already put some thought into, "This is what we're looking for," right? And it's also a signal to the development community, what is it that this community is interested in? So it really is at that high level. You guys always reserve the right to, first of all, change what's in the comp plan. Secondly, you always have the right to approve or deny a particular project on the merits of that individual project. But it is good to try to create some lenses for which to view some of the projects that come before you, and also is helpful to staff to kind of know, okay, these are the priorities of our legislative body, and so that we can have those conversations with potential developers even before it gets to the point of a council meeting.
Anyone else? Questions or comments?
So I think what, just to put a fine point on this, to Councilmember Giffel's point, I think there's a couple things here. One is with six percent of the land left, let's be clear that you're not going to demonstrably move the needle one way or another, this cake is pretty well baked. But with the six percent left, our staff's particular priority on the agricultural land that's left is to focus on single-family development that focuses more on the family. And that, our view is that senior housing, and if you're looking for younger folks, it would be focused on kind of amenity-rich areas and multifamily areas, not so much single-family residential. That's, I think, the crux of what Megan was sharing tonight.
I do have a question. The six percent, does that include the township property or just Fishers Incorporated?
It would be unincorporated land that we have jurisdiction over as well.
If I may, but in terms of moving forward, it does feel like, and I think maybe that's why this was backburnered for so many months, that as a body, we haven't had a full conversation about, I mean, we haven't really discussed this, and each of us share different viewpoints to develop policy. And this study was expensive, and there's a lot here, and I think we can appreciate it, probably needs to be sorted through. So I have a couple questions about just moving forward. Is the task force still activated or not? No, okay. So therefore, as we move forward, is there an opportunity for a more robust work session to have that conversation, is that desired? Or, I mean, it seems to me especially quickly, Mayor Fadness, you teased out some thoughts you've had about housing strategy. So this all fits together, it shouldn't be piecemeal, I think, so.
Well, I think the express purpose tonight is to do just that. This is a work session, Megan's providing ideas and thoughts and a review of what the consultant shared. There's kind of these four pillars, if you will, four strategies that were recommended that have, parts of it have been incorporated into the comp plan, but not all of it has been. And so tonight, if the council said, "You know what, we're, we're good with these four strategies, go ahead and incorporate them in the comp plan," we would bring a, we would bring an amendment to the comp plan back for your consideration at a council meeting. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. So we can have additional work sessions if the council chooses to do so, and we're happy to have those conversations. But if not, we can either, you're really at a crossroads. We can just leave the strategies where they are, and they don't end up incorporated in the comp plan, and we can bring projects to you on a case-by-case basis. Or we can put those strategies in the comp plan per an amendment, and you guys can vote on them. Or you can discuss it more, those are kind of your three options at this point.
I think it's good just to, the four pillars that you referred to, and Megan, that you say are pretty much in.
There are elements of it.
Elements that are in there, I think that just to marry those up and submit that back to council would be good. Because then that gives either a direction of, hey, that's robust enough, or it isn't, and then the council will can decide based on, based on that.
And that would be in the form of an actual council agenda item, where you guys could open it up for discussion, have that, have that dialogue there versus a work session.
Yeah, I think then you just, we put it to bed at that point.
So, so the housing study, I mean, the housing plan right now doesn't have some of this, these recommendations in it because?
So the housing study is a separate standalone document, it does have all these recommendations in it. It, but it is just that, it's recommendations, so it's not necessarily policy, and it's not within the Fishers twenty forty plan.
And it's not within the Fishers twenty forty plan, yeah, well, you know, I've been, yeah.
There are elements of it, but nothing, but that was decided.
My personal, my personal opinion is I don't have a problem with the twenty forty plan as it is.
And I would like to see more added, so I think that's, those are two different opinions.
And that's an honest, that's your guys' prerogative, and you can either discuss it in a work session format, or literally just come to a council meeting, and we can put them up, and you guys can have the debate there.
I, I think the best thing is we reaffirm or change the twenty forty, and you, we vote on that in a council meeting, and that puts it to bed. You can have your, you know, each person can have their say on their vote based on, do you agree with the current twenty forty plan, or do you not agree with it? And if you don't agree with it, what is, what are the differences? However, we have to remember, this is, just like any business that's out there, there are strategies that are brought forth from people that do not live in our community or do not work in our business. And so you have to take those and go, okay, we all know, at least, you know, we're not, and we're not high in mighty say we know what's best for everybody in Fishers at every time, but we're, we're here to say, look, this is what we feel like our constituents feel. Like David, for instance, he's sharing from his district, and this is what, what their voice is. Just makes, I think that's better just to reaffirm or to change and adapt in the twenty forty plan.
And I, and I also think it's just important to, this is such a high-level framework that you guys always, always have the ability to deny a project based on that project's merits. You're not handcuffed to anything, it's just at a high level, what are we focused on as a community? Those are, that's, I mean, we're at the hundred-thousand-foot view, but it's not binding you to any particular project because you said that these are generally our priorities. I think that's important to keep in mind as you look at those strategies in the comp plan.
Which is exactly what I was gonna talk about, Scott, with that. I mean, again, we don't need to get muddled down in the details. We still get another bite at these apples as they come forward to council, and then to Planning Commission and through public comment on each individual project that comes before us. So I think Megan and her staff did an awesome job in kind of culminating all that information and presenting it tonight. I think the strategies are sound, I think the strategies are good. I think it does do that good hundred-thousand-foot level. But again, just to reiterate what the mayor said, you know, this is a very high-level discussion. This is not a minutia discussion right now. We will get into minutia discussion as we start looking at individual projects as they continue to come forward. You know, what they wanted to do is they wanna put a framework around it, right? We're talking about six percent of unused land in the city, which is not a lot. I mean, it's, that's very little, quite frankly. So we're not talking about moving the needle one way or the other in some catastrophic way that's gonna send the city spiraling one way or the other. So again, just keep that in mind. Again, I don't think we need to have any more, you know, kind of robust conversation about this. If you wanna codify it, put it in there, put it in the agenda, let's vote on it like we do everything else. And then as these projects continue to come forward, we'll take everyone based on the merits that they come forward in. So, but again, I think you guys have done banner, banner work.
Mayor Fadness, I just have one quick question for you, just opinion. Housing status in our community in this moment, how, is it red alert? Is it something that's moderately needs to be addressed, like in your viewpoint?
Housing status?
Yeah, just, I mean, we, we invested, the city invested fifty thousand dollars in this study. To me, that gave me the impression like, this is important, so I was just, help me understand just overall the overall importance.
From my perspective, there's multiple ways to look at that. You know, Megan shared with you the demand forecast, so there's an incredible demand for people that wanna live here, which is, that's great, that's a wonderful problem to have. The question that I have is what type of development do we need to build here that will make us sustainable for the next forty or fifty years? If you look at it through the lens of only trying to meet the need that is out there, that isn't necessarily the metric that I would measure it by. I would measure it by what type of development ensures our economic and financial viability for the long term. And that's where I think you get into these interesting questions about, you know, single-family development that's focused on younger or family-aged individuals allows us to attract the educated, working folks that make our community very viable to attract commercial development. So that's a strategy that allows us to bring and attract more commercial base here than, say, others. So to me, there's no question that there's an insatiable demand to live in Hamilton County, to live in Fishers. I think that's fantastic. What we need to be careful about now is not reacting to the market just for the sake of reacting to the market, but reacting to the market in a way that's advantageous for our community, not just today, but twenty years from now and thirty years from now. And that's where I think you see some of Megan's conversation tonight about, if we wanna capture that young, talented person, that educated person that wants to move here, you need density, whether you like that word or not, but done well in amenity-rich areas, you attract young people. We've gotta meet the need for sixty-five and older, they need to be in an amenity-rich area. The finite amount of farmland we have left should be looked at for single-family residential so we can drive more young, educated, working folks to our community. That's my perspective, but you guys all obviously make the land use decisions. But I would just caution you to always react to not just today's market forces, but ultimately the long-term sustainability of our city.
Yeah, I wanna come out, you know, looking towards the future, you really gotta look ahead a little bit. What worked in this community twenty, twenty-five years ago is probably not gonna work now. And the type of housing stock you have, we just need to be really thoughtful about this. The study's been great, gives us some suggestions, we don't have to take them all, we don't have to take any of them. But ultimately, we're gonna take a look at this and make sure we plan for that next generation.
And honestly, as, as Councilmember Peterson said, what we're looking for is some sort of alignment so that we don't bring a project forward to you that you guys say, "Where, where in the world did this come from? This is so out of alignment from what our vision is." That's really the conversation. And I, honestly, I don't think we have that problem often. We don't tend to bring projects to you guys where you're thinking. And I, honestly, I don't think we have that problem often. We don't tend to bring projects to you guys where you're thinking, why, why would be, why would be having this conversation? So, what we will do, uh, to close the loop on this conversation, Megan, is kind of a, a red-line version of what the strategies are being recommended versus what's already in the complan. And then bring it to you guys for an agenda item and you guys can vote it up or down, modify it. Tell us to, you know, go do something else and we'll go from there.
Perfect. We're running it up against time. So, we need to move on to nonprofits funding discussion. A reminder that this is a dis, work session, so we're not in council meeting yet. Um, so this is a discussion amongst council members. Uh, if the public has any comments on this topic, you can wait till the end of this, the council meeting, uh, for the public comment time. Uh, so anyways, uh, just the reason why this is brought to the work session is, uh, there's been back and forth over the last few years. Discussion about how to handle nonprofit funding from a governmental, uh, governmental perspective, taxpayer perspective. Uh, what I want to say is this before we start this, cause I believe this is going to be a very passionate discussion. What I want to say is remember, number one, everybody up here believes in and wants nonprofits to succeed. There's not one person on here that doesn't want nonprofits to succeed. I think the difference I'm hearing and the reason why I wanted to have this discussion was, there's a difference of opinion of whether we each individual should be voting on all the directions of all the different nonprofits. Or maybe that needs to be something that we, you know, present ideas to the mayor. The mayor can then present a budget and the mayor can decide, uh, you know, how that, how that gets distributed. There's all sorts of different, um, views, I think, in that, in that area. So, I want to open this up for discussion, but remember that we all really are on the same page with regard to, we want nonprofits to succeed. So, anyways, let's open it up for discussion. There's, there, I know there were, were some individuals that, uh, did express a desire for us to, uh, disband the nonprofit committee and then move that more to a mayor's discretion. I do know that that was, uh, tabled in some, in just some discussions.
That, that would be my desire, Todd. As we continue to look at this, and I've been on that not-for-profit committee since its inception. And, and again, I think Todd, you know, succinctly said that. It's not that we're against any of the not-for-profits that are out there in the city currently. You, you know, I think, you know, all of them have some really good merit to them or certainly the vast majority of them have a lot of great causes they work for. The, the problem which I run into is, is a problem as, as an elected official and, and taking an oath of office that says, "I'm going to follow the US Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and the rules and ordinance of the city of Fishers." Nowhere in any of those three documents does it say, "I'm going to give away tax dollars to not-for-profit entities." Okay? And that's where I really run afoul of this, is making those choices on behalf of the citizens. I make personal choices myself to give to those not-for-profits that I personally deem necessary with my money. And again, we have to remember as public officials that your tax dollars are your money and you want them spent in the fashion that you want. So, I don't ever want to be up here making a decision about a not-for-profit that, that you in, in the community are just dead-set against, right? On doing that. That's not a decision I ever want to make. We make enough tough decisions up here anyways on a daily basis that I'm sure don't make everybody happy. That's the last one I want to do. So, again, in, until someone can prove to me that the oath of office that I took entitles me to give away tax dollars to not-for-profit entities through the US Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Indiana, and the rules and ordinances of Fishers. I'm, I'm a hard line on this to kick it back into the executive branch to do it in the budget. And if they see fit to, to give away, you know, cash dollars of, of taxpayer money to some not-for-profit enterprise, so be it. But my, my decision is not there.
Anyone else like to share?
I, I disagree. Pete, you give tax dollars away to developers, so you're giving the tax dollars away. What's the difference between a developer and nonprofit? I believe we should keep the nonprofits in the council. The nine of us are in the community. We're exposed to different areas with different nonprofits where the mayor may not even understand, not understand, but even be exposed to another nonprofit. So, the nine of us have the opportunity to cover the entire city of Fishers. I think we should keep the nonprofits at the city council level. But every year, three different council members, instead of the same one being on there for six years, rotate the three off. That way, each one of us have an opportunity to, um, look at the nonprofits in Fishers.
I'm in agreement with you, Brad, because I feel like with, as you mentioned with the developers. And we vote on wa, on, on, you know, these types of things and they get waivers and they're for-profit. So, for that reason, I definitely wholeheartedly agree with you that we should keep these committees. Um, and we are listening to our constituents. So, I think that is, that is our job. So, that's what we get voted in and elected for. So, I mean, I, I think that's a pretty good idea to have like a rotating, um, you know, so that it's not the same people on the committees. So.
Okay. Uh, Cecilia, did you have?
Yes. I, I wanted to share my thoughts. So, it's become very politicized, the selection of what nonprofits to fund. And quite honestly, that, that money is Fisher taxpayer money that really needs to stay within our community. And I really do feel like what needs to be done is evaluate year-to-year what, what is needed in our community. So, whether it be mental health, whether it's be disabilities, whether it's for a specific need at that given time that's, that will impact the most residents and that the money stays within our community. Because it, it, it just doesn't make sense to give, to give crumbs to, to each individual nonprofit. And, 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 and really, we, we need to make the most impact within our community. We have a lot of community needs within our own community. So, that's my thoughts.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brad, I just want to make a comment. You said that we're giving money to developers. Really, we're not. You know, we give them an incentive, but it's basically a break in the taxes they would pay. This is, what we're talking about here is taxing the public and giving it to nonprofits. I just want to make that point. I don't see the difference in what you're talking about.
We have an impact fee. If you don't charge that impact fee, you're giving that impact fee to the developer, Dave. You're giving it to the developer. You're, you're giving the money to the developer.
I, I think there's a difference.
It's still fiscal responsibility and I agree with both Crystal and, and Brad. This is not, um, a strange thing to do. Uh, Indiana communities across the state, most grant to nonprofits who do good work to serve their citizens. So, this is a respected practice and does good work. I think where we have fallen short, as I am also a member of the nonprofit committee, um, the process is completely broken. And there is, can be done so much better and so much more transparently. There are great best practices in this state that we can emulate and I brought those forth. So, I would like to recommend that the nonprofit committee stay. It continue to be a city council, uh, responsibility. I think rotating membership is a good, uh, practice. I would also consider, um, adopting some of the best practices that are found across the state. And lastly, a consideration once again to open it up to consider partnering with the Hamilton County Community Foundation. As a lot of cities do as well. So, I think there's some really good, important paths that still take taxpayer dollars responsibly. And lift up nonprofits that are doing good work that is needed in our community.
So, uh, it's seven o'clock, uh, council presence. First of all, I, I mean, just to make sure we're all being fair about this. I think the committee members that have been on there today have done a good job being transparent. I don't think there's ever been anything done nefarious or inappropriate about how they've handed out money to nonprofits. To be clear, I don't care what you do. We would execute well under my administration. And I'm sure we can facilitate and help the council if you decide to do this. You all have strong opinions on it. My recommendation would be put it on the council agenda, vote it one way or another and progress. You, you asked for the directive tonight, Councilmember, obviously this is a work session. So, you know, you guys have the opportunity to discuss it, but ultimately, you could just put it on the council agenda for January if that's your direction. And we'll, we'll, we'll live with whatever decision you all make.
I think that's, I think that's the only way to move forward because there's just, there's a, a variety of opinions and that's great. And you cast, you cast your vote based on your opinion and we move forward. So, I think with the two, as we get ready to start the council meeting, uh, two items we need to add at least till January, if not February, are the 2040 Plan and nonprofit.
We'll, we'll bring those back.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we want to roll right into or?